Thank you so much for your patience. Can we make a motion to open up? Moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilman Kalik and Councilman Omar. Roll call to open up our meeting again.
Roll call to open up the... No, no, the special meeting. The special meeting?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Councilman Jackson.
Okay, thank you. To open up the special meetings, open back up. I'm sorry?
Councilman Jackson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Councilman Jackson, I didn't see you sitting there.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Kalik, Councilwoman Mims, I'm sorry, Councilman Omar?
Yes.
Councilman Uden? Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Thank you. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, the votes are nine in favor. Special meeting is hereby open.
Madam Clerk?
Eight in favor.
Madam Clerk, can we take item?
One absent.
Number nine.
Number nine or number eight?
Item nine.
Okay. Number nine is Resolution Authorizing Settlement of Pending Litigation in the Matter of Omar Ledesma versus City of Patterson Law, Resolution Number 25:239.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilman Velez and Councilman Omar. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, do we have those items, the item or you took them away? I know, but we still...
Those are confidential.
No, I know the details are confidential, but we still have the items.
There it is.
Yes, in here. No, no, it's in the blue folder.
I'll give you this blue folder, and then this has the confidential details.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number nine. Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I mean, one, I'm not against this individual being rewarded for the abuse that he took, but what I'm gonna point out is the fact that this administration caused this entire thing. Now, the taxpayers are paying yet again. It comes before us because the administration, the mayor, has some personal vendetta and utilizes his seat as a position, a situation of power, and who pays the price? The residents pay the price because the mayor with his nonsense. Madam Clerk, my vote is no.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Omar?
Yes.
Councilman Uden?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Velez?
Thank you, Corporate Council, for diligent work with the outside attorney on this case. Save us taxpayer money. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Council President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Okay, the votes are, one, two, three, four, five, seven in favor, one against, one absent. Resolution number nine is hereby adopted.
Item six, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Where is six? One second, Council President.
No problem. We'll take item six.
I have it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Read, I'm sorry. I can't understand you, Councilwoman.
She say eight, eight, eight in favor, one negative, and, oh, seven in favor, one absent, and one, no.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
That's what she said, yeah.
Yeah. You want me to read the roll call again? Okay. Seven in favor, one against, one absent.
Yes, item six, Madam Clerk.
Item number six, Resolution Authorizing Settlement of Pending Litigation Claim in the Matter of Gabriela Vasquez versus City of Patterson Law, Resolution Number 25:236.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Velez, can I have a second? Second by Councilman Omar. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number six.
Roll call on item number six, Councilwoman Cotton? Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson? Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman Omar?
Yes.
Councilman Uden?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Velez, Council President.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. The votes are, hold on, seven in favor, one against, one absent. Resolution number six is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, item number seven.
Item number seven, Resolution Authorizing Settlement of Pending Workers' Compensation Claim in the Matter of Hilda Diaz versus City of Patterson Law, Resolution Number 25:237.
So move.
So move by Councilman Velez, second by Councilwoman Davila and Councilman Uden. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number seven.
Roll call on item number seven, Councilwoman Cotton? Councilwoman Davila? Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman Uden? I'm sorry, Councilman Omar.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Uden?
I said yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Council President?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Votes are seven in favor, eight in favor, I'm sorry, one absent. Item number seven is hereby adopted.
Item number eight, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. One second, Councilman. I don't see eight. Let me see. Just give me this. Resolution Authorizing Settlement of Pending Workers' Compensation in the Matter of Scott Easton versus City of Patterson Law, Resolution Number 25:238.
So move.
Moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilman Velez and Councilman Omar. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number eight.
Item number eight. Councilwoman Cotton? Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just for a point of clarity, I mean, I am supporting this. I was asked, or in case those who were wondering why I did not support the other item with this, you know, the PD definitely has to begin to do a better job. This is ridiculous that nobody's being held accountable, and it's a matter of, you know, we do whatever we want to, we treat people however we want to, and then the city's just gonna pay for these lawsuits that come about, you know. Despite what may be rumored, I try to be very respectful. I just had a police officer on the fire scene last night, just be totally disrespectful to me, called me a fucking idiot, and I'm just trying to be helpful, trying to call 911 for a police fire, and they come around here barking rules, they don't know how to talk to people, not all of them, but a large majority, and while we're spending out this money, taxpayers, hard-earned money, while people, they still want pay increases. So, part of the reason why I didn't support that other item, but I understand this is a working comp case, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Your vote is yes? Thank you. Councilman Kalik?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Omar? Councilman Uden?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Okay, Council President?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. The votes are seven in favor, I'm sorry, eight in favor, one absent. Item number eight is hereby adopted.
Item number 10, Madam Clerk.
Item number 10, Resolution Authorizing Settlement of Pending Litigation in the Matter of Fred W. Larria versus City of Patterson Law, Resolution Number 25:240.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Velez, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Davila, Councilman Omar. Roll call on item number 10.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Ten.
Councilwoman Davila? Councilman Jackson? Pass. Councilman Kalik? Councilman Omar?
Yes.
Councilman Uden?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Councilman Velez? Council Pres, I'm sorry. Councilman Jackson? Council, uh-uh, Jackson. Thank you. Council President?
Yes.
Thank you. Votes are eight in favor, one absent. Item number 10 is hereby adopted.
Item number 11, Madam Clerk.
Item number 11. Resolution Authorizing Reading of the Calendar Year 2025 Municipal Budget by Title Only and the Introduction of the Calendar Year 2025 Municipal Budget Finance, Resolution Number 25:241. So move.
Moved by Councilwoman Davila, can I get a second? Second by Councilwoman Cotton?
Number 11.
Item 11?
Discussion.
Discussion, Councilman Kalik?
Mr. CFO, can you give us the summary of this upcoming introduction of the budget?
So, summary of the budget, salaries are going up $4 million from 2024, insurance is going up $3 million from 2024, and pension is going up $2 million from 2024. Right now, the introduced budget is at 5.6% still.
What's the percentage again?
5.6%. And again, the reason is because we've asked for state aid, we won't get an answer from the state until after July, so I'm only allowed to put the amount that we had in as last year. The amount we had in last year was 27 million, we asked for 33 million, I'm not allowed to put the difference until the state gives us a response on what they're gonna give us.
So this, basically, this budget is based on us getting $27 million transitional aid, correct?
Or 33 million.
From last year.
It's 27 million from last year, but we've asked for 33 this year.
I understand, but this, the budget in front of me is based on we're getting $27 million from the state?
Correct.
Correct. Within, with that, there's gonna be 5.6% potential tax increase, correct? With the 27 million?
Correct.
Council President?
No, no, I'm not done. Well, last conversation that I had with you was look into some line item, see if we could reduce it before, with the introduction of the budget. Have you looked into it, or was, and I even identified some of the line items that I do well.
So we went through vacancies and removed all vacancies, and that's still based on payroll projections that I've done, it's still at 5.6.
Still with the reduction, still 5.6%?
Council? Council President?
Councilman Uden first, and then Councilman Velez.
Thank you very much, Council President. Mr. CFO, this is the second time we are discussing about this budget. Once it's appeared in the workshop session, we made our voice about 5.6% introduction based on, based on the hope that we are going to receive $33 million. But there was no other options, where I stated that what would happen if we do not receive $33 million? I want to just state one more time to the public that we are speaking about a budget introduction with the hope that we'll receive $33 million transitional aid, and we can go down to minimum requirement of 2%. And this is the hope we are expecting, and this budget is totally based on the hope. My question to you, CFO, that what would happen if we do not receive this $33 million from the transitional aid?
If I may jump in at this time.
Sure, sure. Welcome to the chamber, Mr. BA, and, you know, go ahead.
Thank you so much.
Well, one second. Mr. BA, since you are new to the chamber, just give like a brief intro to the community so they know exactly who you are, and then if you can just answer, Councilman Uden, thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Council President. Hi, my name is Mark Seaman, I'm gonna, I'm the new BA for the City of Patterson. Prior to coming here, I was the deputy county administrator for the County of Passaic, so I made about a two-block walk over here to start my job here for the city. I've got roughly 12 to 13 years of government experience, nine on the local level, and then four in the county. I have a master's in public administration with a concentration in budgeting and finance. I've, you know, this is the first week that I've been in the city in this role, you know, in a perfect world, this isn't what I would like to be presenting to the council at this time, but this is where we are with the budget. The opportunity for the city right now is to introduce the budget, and then the state has the opportunity then to see that they're working with real numbers. That gives us the opportunity to then see what we can do in the event that we, in the event that we do not get this aid, we now have a timeframe to figure that out. Now, the CFO has been through this process multiple years, this is my first crack at it, and I've had about a week of looking at the budget. Do I feel that there are probably areas that we can look at deeper? Absolutely. We're gonna work with that, I've been working with the state directly for the last week, and then I've been meeting with them prior to taking on this job. So, working with the state, they've also provided particular opportunities that we can also be looking at to help make this a better situation. Right now, that would, that would result in needing more conversation with the governing body to see what you would be interested in, what your level of interest is in particular ordinances that we could be looking into, but the reality of that is too, is that I would like to be able to have these conversations with you guys directly to get an idea of what you think is appropriate. Do I want to present a 5.6% increase? Absolutely not. From an introduction perspective, I'm comfortable with that because I know that we are not going to adopt that.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilman Uden?
Yes, so, Mr. BA, you said you are confident that we will receive, how much you will receive out of 33 million requested transitional aid, you think?
I can't commit to that because the state hasn't provided that, I just know that if once we introduce, then they have the opportunity to look at our budget the right way. Now, we have a deadline of making sure that this is introduced by the end of this month. Now, there's the opportunity to see if there's anything that we can do in between that time, but at the end of the day, that would result in us having another special meeting at the end of this month, and I don't have a guarantee that I would be able to put something like that in such short notice. And for the public to also understand, my wife is giving birth at 7:00 in the morning tomorrow, so I don't, the timeframe is a little different for me right now, so I will be doing the best that I can throughout that time, but I think that if you give me more time with regards to the introduction, I will have, it gives me a faster jump into, jumping into trying to figure that out.
Mr. BA, I understand your situation, and I welcome you here in the City of Patterson. You are just jumped in the middle of the conversation because conversation started way before even you, you know, came to the City of Patterson. The point is that this expectation, which is 33 million transitional aid, if we receive that, we are gonna go down, and that's what is stated by the administration, that we're gonna go down to 2%, which is a minimum requirement.
Correct.
But what's the second plan by the administration, that what would happen if we received $20 million? What would happen if we appear the same situation that happened in 2016 in Atlantic City?
The answer would be that we would have to look at layoffs, that's 100% what the answer would be. There's no other way, if we, if we get less than the 27, there's absolutely no way that we would be able to function without doing something like that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. BA, for be honest and be, you know, truthful answer. Now, I'd like to, before I close, I'd like to state one more time to the public that we are expecting $33 million, and I wish, I hope that we receive the expected or the amount that we expecting from the state. However, this is again, this is just a hope, we do not even know how much you're going to receive. If I go back under Trump administration, 2016 in Atlantic City, Atlantic City is about to lose everything, we all know about the situation that happened. They are totally hoping like us today, how we are standing, totally based on the transitional aid, Atlantic City was doing the same thing in 2016, and they ended up with losing almost everything. We don't want to see, City of Patterson facing exactly the same thing that Atlantic City faced in 2016. Yes, I understand that this is an introduction, which is a plan, but plans should have a second plan that we cannot just based on a hope, uncertainty, we should have a strategy, that's exactly what I'm standing for. I am not against the introduction, I'm against your plan, there is no second plan was stated by anybody, not by CFO, not by mayor, or anybody, anywhere, and I cannot just support something that is totally based on a hope. A family cannot run on a hope. A family had their planning, budget planning, we all do have that, and a city cannot run on a hope. So that's all I can state to the public, I stated multiple times, you know, before, I believe that, and I think that initiative was taken by the CFO or someone from the administration that sit down with the council members and find or hear from them in informal setting or somewhere, not on the, in a live camera, but hear what's a possible solution could be, instead of coming up with same budget with no slight changes at all, and this is totally wrong. One thing we should know this, what happening in Trenton, we all know that, they are cutting their, their budget, they're tightening their belt, and we expect exactly $33 million to me is it just a, I don't think we are receiving, that's, I could be wrong, but again, you cannot even state that we are receiving it. But from that situation, I don't want to see that exactly what happened to Atlantic City in 2016, that's happening to our city in this year in 2025. So, with that being said, I'd like to state to the public that we are, have to be strategized, we have to be well-planned, instead of just based on hope.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. BA.
Council President?
Councilman Velez, and then Councilman Jackson, and then Councilman Davila.
Thank you, Council President, you're doing a great job. Mr. BA, once again, welcome. In the short time that you've been here, I think they haven't highlighted you enough. And I just gotta go, in this administration, they have come to us and say, let's change the health plan to state plan, it's gonna save us $10 million a year. They came back saying that they increases the health plan, we have to go back to the taxpayer. They came and say, let's create a sewer utility, because that's gonna take a burden to the city of taxpayers, still, we are paying more for sewer utility in the City of Patterson. They came up to us and say, you know, Council, we're gonna save $10 million yearly in the garbage contract if we, if we support their plan, that the DPW was gonna be taking ownership on the bulk pickup. And what we see in our city is the contrary of saving. If we was saving, we don't see our street dirty, people don't pay a lot of sewer fees, you know, it's, not only that, we created a, just in case you don't know, we created a, a scroll account for developers to put their money there to be able to, you know, get the developer fee moving forward, and still, we don't have answer where's that money at, or where it's being utilized. Right now, we have in front of us a budget, but I don't see the resolution attached to it, that speak about this budget. Now, I sent a letter to the mayor regarding his section in, how you call it, Zoom, to the community. I was watching it, and it's, then came no plan on it. I expressed myself in that letter to the mayor to come forward and tell us the plan. I even request in that letter that he be present today to justify the 5.6 presentation, introduction. So, if I going to balance what he have told us in the past, based on this 5.6 fictitious, that he trying to make believe that it's not gonna happen, but if we present it, it's gonna tell them, listen, the state's gonna say, you know what? The introduction is great, 5.6, let's take on that 5.6, let's not give him 27, let's give him 23, okay? Because they already presented a budget with 5.6 tax increase. There's no guarantee, there's no guarantee, because then the state probably gonna say, where's the revenue, where's the crew revenue for the past year have been this administration bringing to the City of Patterson without going to the taxpayer pocket? I still cannot digest that we are gonna do introduction, everybody's been telling, it's only introduction, it's only introduction, it's to the state no know that we doing an effort to submit this budget with a tax increase 5.6, but just to gamble, just to gamble. And when you gamble, and you roll the dice, those dice cannot match what really we are expecting with this budget. You know, in the past budget approval introduction, I would say we, the city, have to be more independent, try to budget the police different, try to budget the fire different, try to budget DPW different, and other services around, because the state's gonna get tired of giving money, and we don't see it develop in the City of Patterson. It goes to lawsuits, it goes through insurance, tomorrow they approve something, they say, oh, we had to come back because the insurance of, health insurance went up. No, we had to come back because we need to increase the sewer fees to balance the budget. So, it's like a Cash 20 thing, you know, it's a game. Once again, he ignored my letter, why he ignored my letter? Because he didn't answer it. Second, he's not here, requesting him to come here, you know, and I think that the same way, gentlemen say today, you know, Councilman Velez, he is getting the beat, the mayor should be here, sitting down and listening to the concern of the community, especially when the governing body asks him to at least come here, at least come here. So, you know, I still analyzing the budget up and down, but this 5.6 is not convincing me, even as his introduction, I will feel more comfortable when we gonna adopt it. That's when I gonna feel more comfortable. No, I just, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, with all your respect, well, Councilwoman, with all your respect, I'm making my diligent comments, and that's what I'm saying. Taxpayers out there are suffering, we get the calls when the garbage is not picked up, look at downtown as it is, restaurants are still suffering, the problem with the rats and rootings and all that baloney that we have in downtown, still, a plan have not been put in place, okay? They promised us that when those street trucks arrive... They promised us that when those street trucks arrive, that downtown was going to be a priority. The trucks arrive, nothing is happening in downtown. Still, the SID is not even putting the budget to work. So I could go on and on and on and on, and we could name a lot of things that you see as a residents of Patterson. Look, today, residents of Patterson complains of a call of service. I'm not going to elaborate on that because a C2 has two stories, right? So, you know, but this budget, right now before it, is not representing the, what we see out there. So moving forward, you know, you guys had the vote, and let me say this, the letter that they sent from the state, is a letter that I could read, I could simulate, but I'm here to do what I was elected for, to protect the taxpayers of the City of Patterson. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council members. Thank you, Councilwoman Alar, Dr. Lillisamim for covering me during the executive session.
She did a great job.
Thank you, yes, like always, she's always doing a great job. I know I have Councilman Jackson and Councilwoman Davila, based on my notes, correct? Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Council President. One, I mean, it's the council's job, I mean, I hear a lot of complaints, but it's the council's job to actually put forward a balanced budget. Councilman Udine, you kind of had me lost, I don't know what you're talking about relative to Trenton and circumstances that have nothing to do with Patterson, but maybe that's something that you can enlighten us on. Mr. BA, you spoke with regard to the potential of introducing some ordinances that may be able to benefit the budget, you want to elaborate a bit on that?
Based on the climate of conversation, I'm not sure how much you're going to like it, but it's about increasing the UCC fees and as well as increasing the sewer rates, which are recommendations from the state.
Okay, so, one, we've already done that, and slapping, you know, residents, you know, with more increases, I don't think it would be the very advantageous. Is that something that you personally have come up with, or is that the suggestion coming from the mayor's office?
No, those are suggestions that were provided by the DCA that have been provided in the past.
DCA, and relative to these, I forget how you phrased it, Mr. CFO, but basically, the hiring freezes. So has there been an evaluation on services that's going to be diminished because these positions that we're not filling?
So the hiring...
What target positions are we talking about? And in doing so, what exactly would be the savings? How many positions, which positions we're talking about, and what's the projected cost cuts?
So right now, we're just holding on them until we know exactly what amount we're going to get. If, let's just say, they come up, if the state comes up with, you're going to get, just to throw a number out there, you're going to get 32 million instead of 33 million, then we would have to evaluate which positions we would cut and not hire, and or if we have to do something else, we will evaluate them.
Do we have a current list of open positions that's not being filled due to this objective of possibly not filling positions to circumvent the budget?
We...
Is that the vacant seat list?
Yeah, I'm going to need a full list of every single position in the administration that's not filled, and the corresponding pay for that specific position. I can't be responsible and look for potential ways to balance the budget if I don't know which positions are still vacant and how much the potential savings would be. That has to be measured and weighed over potentially writing an ordinance to implement new fees. Have we done an evaluation on our state health plan? How many, how many, how many claims have we had over the last three years?
Our usage rate is 116%.
I'm sorry?
Our usage rate is 116%. So for us to leave the state, my understanding from our administrators, the people that are doing insurances, it would have to be between 90 and 95%. So we're way over. Just to go back, in 2019, when we went to the state, we were paying, our health insurance cost was about $58 million at the time. Our insurance after seven years now is $60 million. So at the time, it was worth it to go into the state health benefits plan. The state health benefits...
It was how much, 50?
$58 million in 2019.
58 million?
Yes.
And where is it now?
60 million dollars.
60?
That's seven years later. So that plan, again, I don't know how much it would have went up every year, but if...
After year, after, okay, so what you can provide for me is, one, year to year, when we changed over to the state health plan, you said we're paying 58 million?
Mm-hmm.
So what we paid the subsequent years, as well as the use rate, and specifically an outline, I want to report on all of the claims that were made, year to year, and if we had 114%, because after year two, we went up substantially, we only saw savings one year.
No, that's incorrect.
So what was it then?
I can provide you the amounts, but again, if we were paying $58 million in 2019 and we're paying 60 now, we saw basically savings every year until this year.
Okay, so that's why I'm asking for the numbers, because from my understanding, the very next year, when we went to do the budget for the following year, it went up substantially. It was no longer the same savings that we had when we were self-employed, I mean, self-insured. So, I mean...
I can provide...
We can have the debate later, I just want to, send me the information via email. Lastly, where on the budget have we been impacted by these recent salary increases that's been given to the PD? What's been the percentage of increase on that line item?
The percentage of increase on PD is $3 million.
The percentage?
The percentage.
$3 million, so that $3 million is potential, the difference between what we asked for and what we're asking for, what we were, what was that, 27, so?
About 4%?
4%. All right, I'll wait to get that email. We voted on this tonight, right?
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila.
Thank you very much, Council President. I know that this item, and I'm looking at my phone because I was looking for the letter that was sent to us here by ordering us, that by statute, we're supposed to have an introduction of the budget. So when I hear some of my colleagues say, oh, I'm not supporting the increase, they're making it seem as though we are increasing, there is a potential, there's no, if you understand the process, you can't talk about an adoption without having an introduction. So the introduction absolutely should somewhat reflect what the adoption is going to be in a normal world, right? But we understand that the City of Patterson, you know, is so dependable on this transitional aid, right? And with that, is like saying, you know, I get welfare and I have this letter that says, you got to do these five things, if not, you can't get your welfare check, right? So basically, that's what's going on here. So we all received, this council entirely received this letter after us not, because the mayor, okay, because the mayor has to, the obvious, you know, and I did ask, like other colleagues, asked the mayor to be here, he had another commitment, all right? This is his budget being introduced through his administration to us. We in finance did, and I'll put it on record, I requested to the CFO to go ahead and do a budget without having any transitional aid, so you could see the astronomical amount of money that then taxes would be increased, right? But bringing it back, we have a mandate by statute, okay? And so where I am right now is, I don't support a 5.6 increase, I would never. And if that were the case, that today I support an introduction so they can good faith see that we are doing, okay, and making sure that we follow our fiduciary responsibility, when it comes to adoption, that is when those increases would be. And if that was the case, I won't support that, absolutely not. But right now, we have a mandate, so everyone wants to go ahead and ignore it? I'm not going to ignore it. I'm going to take action on what I believe is the right thing, because we are not in the position to lose any money that's been given to us. We are not. This city is cash strapped, you know? If this city took action on increasing certain fees that need to be increased, that haven't been increased in years, 20, 30 years, I mean, we all see what's happening, we all see, nationally speaking, we all see all of the increases, we're not blind to it, right? There has to be increases. Do I agree with my colleagues when they say that, you know what, I pay taxes as well, right? And we're not getting the services that we deserve, like Passaic does? I mean, I work in Passaic, it's a beautiful city, and congratulations on a landslide to Mayor Laura. You see the difference in the work that's being done in Passaic. When you look at Clifton, when you look at other towns, right? Patterson, we as well, but I'm going to tell you something right now, when I hear people say, oh, this city is F'd up, this city, this city, no, it's the people. The people are the ones tossing the garbage in the streets. I've seen it with my own eyes. Do some workers not care about where they work? Absolutely, absolutely. So we can't take the onus away and just put it all on the council or put it all on the administration. No, we live in this city, and that's the common denominator, that we have to love where we live, we have to respect where we live, and at the end of the day, we have a responsibility. And that responsibility, where we are right now, is that we have to have an adoption, not an adoption, correction, an introduction before May 30th. Well, guess what? Today is May 13th workshop, we're not taking action today. I'm sorry, we are taking action. If we do not take action today, and we had to move this, it would be moved to the 20th, correct? And if we didn't take action there, there are no meetings unless there's a special meeting. I would like to see who here, because you have to have at least for an introduction, majority, which would be five, right? Not super majority. And so all I'm saying is, we are here today, and I'm asking my colleagues, let us do what is right, let us not, let us not tell the community, we are increasing 5.6% because we're not. So if this passes today, I want to see who gets, who gets in the mail a bill that says that your taxes have increased 5.6%. That's not happening. In the adoption, I know you ain't cutting me off, Council President.
I'm not.
Oh, okay, no, because let me tell you, I have maintained myself throughout this meeting, it is now 12:24, and I've maintained, I've been very quiet, I voted yes or no, and I believe that at this point right now, this is something very important. Let us stop lying to the people, please. Let us stop lying, and let us take action and be responsible when it comes to the City of Patterson pertaining to this introduction.
Thank you. I think, you know, this is one of the most important...
Council President, if I may, my apologies, I did ask, through the CFO, I said, also prepare another budget, like do some type of decreases, right? Like come back to us, because we could do it, we the council, but guess what? I wanted to see what the administration would cut. And what I was told is, well, we're not going to take that action, but then if we come and we do it, right? Because we have that right to do that. So it's like this back and forth, I'm not doing that, I'm not doing that, and that was said to me. But at the end of the day, I will say this, I am in support of doing introduction, because I'm in support of making sure that Patterson is taken care of and that our transitional aid is not in jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this is one of the most important conversation that we should have right now at this time, and we have to spend as much time as possible having a discussion about this introduced budget. Even though I will go further, I believe that we might need another meeting to be able to go over this budget. Because, I mean, we have to face a reality, out of the 47 speaker that we have tonight, you hear how people are suffering and struggling, and in my war, in the third war, every time I knock on the door, the first question that I have, Councilman, what can you do with our taxes? We losing our property, we can't afford anymore to pay our property, our taxes in my war. And that's the conversation that we having, it's hard. When you go to Totoa, and I'm in the real estate business, you go to Totoa, you go to Hawthorne, the same property in Totoa pay less taxes than Patterson. The same property, structure, size, and Hawthorne pay less taxes than Patterson. And people start comparing, but what make our decision more difficult is the lack of service that we getting, the garbage in the community, the ball situation, that people scheduling the ball pickup and the city doesn't pick it up, you know, building department, leaving money on the table by not enforcing the law that we have in the book. When we go and have conversation with those constituents, they ask us, are you enforcing the law that you have in the book? Because you coming into my pocket to ask me for money, but are you guys enforcing the law that you have in the book? And by doing that, you will get enough rateable to plug it into the budget. So that's the conversation that we having, and I think this is not an attack, this is a discussion that the administration need to be on the table with us, because we all suffering. Trust me, believe me, and what I'm telling you, people are running away from Patterson because of the high taxes. It's just unacceptable. You have a two-family house paying $16,000 in taxes in Patterson? The same side of property in Totoa pay way less. You go to Hawthorne, the same situation. I do this every single day. I check in the guardian statement list every single day, and it's tough to do business in Patterson because of the taxes. There's a building on Breland Avenue, $29,000 in taxes, a mixed-use building, so how can you justify that? So we need to have this conversation. This is not an attack, and if we are responsible, we got to face and we got to hear the voice of the people. So with that being said, Mr. CFO, just a minute, I have two questions. I haven't have any question about the budget, I will go with Councilman Catherine, Councilman Mims, and then Udine. But on the, on the, on the, on salary and wage, on 2024, we allocate for salary and wage, $170 million, $197,282, and on the budget 2025, we allocating $121 million, $974,007. So we allocating $4.7 million more on this introduced budget. Why is that?
No, on salary, not, did you say solid waste of salary? Salary.
Salary, yes.
Yes.
Why $4.7 million more?
So it's a combination of the contracts, of every contract, police and fire contracts.
What percentage that those $4.776, almost 5, reflect?
So I believe 4% of it is police.
4%?
And then the rest of it is just small percentages of everybody else.
And as we all know, salary, so we got the 2% across the board, 4%, you got some saving now, we got to look at this number. We could reduce this number, so, because we put in 4% on top of salary and wage, and salary doesn't change much, so we have a room here. So take note on that, on salary and wage. So I'm going to, the general appropriation, general appropriation on 2024, we have $243 million, $160,884 on 2024. On 2025, we getting $248,690, $614,000, $5.5 million difference there. Can you explain this, on this, on the total general appropriation?
So that includes health insurance, and that also includes salaries.
What percentage?
You're looking at the total, you're just looking at total numbers now.
This is page 19, what percentage is the $5.5 million reflecting on the $248 million?
You're looking at page 19?
Page 19, correct.
So, yeah, the difference is between salaries, it's $5 million difference between salaries and the cost of insurance.
Okay. I think, just on those two items, on the, on the salary and wage, the increase of $4.7 million, almost 5 million, we have to go back and take a look at that, we could get some reduction, and we could reduce that number, so let's take a look at that line item. And also, on the general appropriation, that $5.529 million, we have to go and double-check that, because if we could reduce, those are only two items, that we could just squeeze it a little bit more, we got to do more with less now. We are... We, everybody's struggling financially, so we do have to do more with less. So, so that's those two item that I want definitely look at. I think that, you know, we will help the taxpayer if we show that we're not going 2% on the introduced. And let me just say this in closing. We understand and we going with the introduced with 5.6, praying that the state will give us the 33, the 33 million dollars. And that's not, we, it's not guaranteed that the state will give us the 33 million dollars. So we gotta do the job now. If we do the job now, we check all the line item, see where can we save, you know, we doing the work ahead of time. If you look at the history of transitional aid, Mrs. CFO, every city start on transitional aid. And after, as years after year, they start depending less and less on transitional aid. That's how Noir did, that's how Jersey City, that now they not on transitional aid. We increasing the number every year. We asked for 24, then 27, and then now we going for 33. We're gonna have a new governor next year. We don't know what's gonna happen, but we gotta start, we have to start getting ready now, making those tough decision to get the city on track. So I wanna look into those number and, and that's, that's what I have for now. So let me go back with Councilwoman Catten, Councilman Mims, and Councilman Dean.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I, I'm on. Everybody knows that there's not one council member sitting up here that's gonna vote for a 5.6% tax increase. Not one. Not one. Now, it's gonna fall into the hands of how we gonna, this is an introduction. And a gentleman back there in the green shirt, you talked about your taxes. Let me tell you something. By the time we adopt our budget, you won't get your bill until October. So your August bill is, will be out in October. Then you got November looking right in your face. So we gonna either have to make a decision because there's nobody sitting up here that's gonna do a 5.6 increase on adoption. This is just the introduce. And so when they come back, they gonna have to figure out, or we gonna have to figure out how we gonna get it because to get the transitional aid you need, we can only do It's been happening for the last two years. And you probably know, you, I just paid my tax bill Friday, May, for my May bill. I just paid it Friday, it's due, it's due May 10th. There's no way any of us sitting up here is gonna do a tax increase of 5.6%. There's no way. Either they're gonna have a major layoff, something's gonna give, I'm not sure what it is.
Layoffs?
They're gonna come. I said to the mayor, you needed to come here to explain. I was the only council voter, and then maybe I voted no for the garbage contract. When I did my research, I found this company never did residential garbage pickup. They only did apartment buildings, restaurants. So how you have a company who never did residential house, house, house? You see them guys walking down the street, they not even on a truck no more, they just, they walking down to each house, throwing the cans in the back. But supposedly that saved 20 million dollars. Now, I'm not sure now, is it 20 million? Because now we got this bulk pickup that, that's not getting picked up. And they also, I was a no vote also for the sewer tax. I said, let's do consumption and not house size. I have a two-family house. The house next to me is two-family. The house on the other side of me is two-family. There's three of mine, but it's 10 over here. And it's 15 in that one. It doesn't matter how many people living in it, but we should be paying sewer fees by consumption and not house sizes. Because you got a lot of seniors that are living in one-family houses, there's only two people, there's only three people. And they're paying the same amount for a house of one family with someone with eight people. It should not be that. It should be separated. So nobody is gonna go with a 5.6% tax increase. And we gonna have to, it's gonna have to be figured out that, and they, you know, that they're gonna have to come up with something else, but, and believe me, they watching this all over the state. Everybody's watching us tonight. Everybody's looking at it to see, this is only introduction. One thing is that I, I know me as a councilman is not gonna vote on a 5.6, 5.6% increase. I'm not. They gonna have to come down, and they gonna have to come down, they have to come down. This introduction was due March 31st. So they gave us another 30 days. And if you wanna start changing some of these laws that are under books, statutory aid laws, that means our state senators gotta put something out there, our state assembly people gotta put something out there. It has to get on the floor, then it has to be voted on, it has to be signed by the governor. So if you wanna extend some, I think that in the last meeting that we did have before they took it off the agenda, they didn't wanna do anything until August. You can't, you can't introduce a budget, you can't introduce in August, inspect the vote in August. You just can't do it. And no, you know, everybody gonna say what they wanna say, and that's fine. I'm saying for what I've been through, what I've been through. And let me talk about Jeff Jones, who was the mayor. He was the one, Jeff Jones was forced to start charging for festivals and parades. He was forced by the state of New Jersey. When you get transitional aid, then you, we can no longer foot these bills. The city could no longer foot the police, foot the DPW, foot all of them. So he had to come up with that. So I'm not gonna never, I'm not gonna vote for no 5%, 5.6 tax increase. But to introduce, to try to work in good faith with the state, because that's where we get up, we depending on them right now for money, and see how we can work this out. But there's some things that I would do differently, and I suggested that. And most people know what I said about the sewer. Most people know what I said about the garbage company. You know, I, I, those are the things, but, you know, we're never, nobody sitting up here, and everybody can have a different story. They can say however they wanna say it. None of us sitting up here is gonna vote for a 5.6 tax increase. I can tell you that right now. And we gonna, maybe we gonna be, for gentlemen in the green, we get ready to get into some hard times, gentlemen. For all these homeowners out here, we get ready, we get ready to catch it. I pay my taxes. We get ready to catch it. We don't, if we don't do the right thing, we get ready to catch it. I'm telling you. And you can say you heard it from Councilwoman Catten. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Mims, right after Councilman Dean.
So although introducing a budget at one number with an anticipation or the hopes of receiving transitional aid in the amount of 33 million or 27 million at minimum, it's without listening to the community and saying, we're introducing 5.6%, but we're introducing it, but if we don't get this money from the state, this is a reality. Because sometimes introduce sounds introduce and it's, it could be less, but then in reality, 5.6 remains. I would like to see, and I'm putting it on the record, since 2018, we've been on this council, and we have supported some of the initiatives that were brought forward. Councilmember Les spoke about many of them, whether it was sewer, the waste contract for the new contract, when it was pushed to get rid of Roselli, which I felt was an issue to get rid of, get rid of Roselli. And now we see the residual of getting rid of the other garbage company. And now the city is absolutely filthy with all this bulk being dumped all over the community and so many other things. But we have voted, and I would like to see a report on all the items, sewer fee, the garbage contract, and so many other things, fees that we've increased. I wanna see a report on how much revenue has been saved and or brought in to this city based on those items that were brought to us that we approved, that we were told we would save so many millions of dollars. I, I would like to see that. Because that's problematic for me, that we've sat here, we've supported items with an anticipation based on what was presented to us that we would save dollars. And we've been on transitional aid for probably 30 years at this point. We've been on it for a long time, didn't just get on it as of yesterday. And I would like to see what is the plan to transition us off of transitional aid? Are we anticipating or looking, or have some plans to get some ratables? We, are we looking at some big business to come into the community? I would love to hear a plan, and I know it's been stated, but, and even if the mayor wasn't available tonight, I believe that there needs to be a forum, whether it's here in this chamber, where the community could come out and they have an opportunity to speak. But there needs to be clearly, before we vote on this, or in the interim of if it doesn't pass or whatever happens, there needs to be a conversation with the community. Because the reason why the community has such an issue with an introduce of 5.6% or introducing anything that increases is because of the quality of service or lack thereof. For example, I saw someone post, they were talking about street cleaning, they watched, they didn't see anybody give a ticket. Now, mind you, I was sitting in a location and I did see the inspector give out tickets, but in that particular area, they didn't see it. So if there's an inconsistency in that practice for whatever reason, we're losing revenue. And not that we build our revenue base on if you don't, if you don't move your car, we get a ticket, but it's something we have in place. So we have a fine process in place. We should be enforcing that fine. So I think we have to be, those that are responsible for those different departments should have in place enforcement. Why are we missing so many tickets? Why is this not happening? Whether it's inspections, building inspections, permits, whatever that process is, we have increased a lot of fees. And I would like to see on a report, how much money has been brought in based on the fees that, like sewer fees, we've increased that. I wanna see how much money has been brought in since we've increased the fees. I wanna see how much money has been brought in with the garbage contract. It's just recently changed. But I wanna see how much money has been brought in. Anything that we've supported or voted on that is supposed to bring in revenue, I wanna see it. How much have the courts brought in? I wanna see that. Whether it comes to any of the inspections that are going on, whether it's building inspections, zoning inspections, all of those areas was being brought in through our police department, how much money? Because that should be included in this budget conversation as well. In addition to that, 5.6% to hear the community talk about how they can't afford any more increases and not to operate behind that means we're not listening to the community. And in the other, in the last meeting when this item was table, I questioned, I didn't say let's wait until we find out how much money we're receiving from the state. I asked the question, is it feasible for us to, like, maybe do it before the time so we know they're giving us X amount? I didn't say we should do it. I asked the question and posed it on the floor, since we're not gonna find out how much we're getting until like July or August, how much time do we have to do that? In turn, we received a letter from DCA saying they would, which, which is hilarious to me. I've been in politics for 10 years and a former school board commissioner. I've never seen anybody send a letter bullying council members to tell them, if you do not introduce this, if you don't, if you don't adopt the, if you don't pass the introduced budget, you will be fined. I think that's crazy to say, if you don't introduce, and this is why I think it's crazy, right? Last year, we had an issue with the percentage of the introduced budget, this council. And I know you're new, Mark, but I want you to go back and watch it. We had some serious issues and it was reduced down to 2.9%. The introduced. And then at the adopted, it was only 2%. So if you know that we have a concern and we've said it, why are we not listening to the council members and the community and working and doing our, your due diligence on your side to say, we gotta bring this down? 5.6 is not gonna budge, right? We have to bring it to a place where we can get it supported. Whether it's at 3%, 3.5, whatever, what is that, having a conversation with, with the council members? Where can we take this, where we can get the support? Just to introduce so we can work this out until that time. But to give 5, 5.6%, knowing that council members have said it time and time again, we cannot support an introduced at 5.6. This is, I don't know what happened from last year to this year. Because last year, they were like, okay, we'll work it out, and they reduced it to 2.9. This year, it's like, we don't care what you said, we just gonna, you know? No. So what happened?
I wonder why. Last week, the last time.
Wait, I, I have the phone. Oh, okay. So that's, that's just what I'm saying. Last year, we had some concerns, you worked it out, got it to 2.9 in introduced and 2% in the adopted. We have to do the same due diligence. I know you would love tonight, I can't speak for nobody else, but I, I've, Mark, you know, I told you, I was not supporting 5.6%. I said it last week, and I'm not, and look, I'm not supporting an introduced in a 5.6%. I don't care what it is. Because you, if you support an introduced, if we don't get that money, introduced will become reality and adopted. So we have to push the meter and say to the administration, 5.6 is high for our, for our small tax base. That's, it's too high. So we gotta work it out. I don't know what it will take, if it takes another meeting or whatever that requires, but we have to do that. Because in order to get it done, you gotta get the votes. And if you don't get the votes, it's not gonna pass, and you, you need the votes. We gotta count to five, right?
Thank you, Councilman Dean.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to my council colleagues. Mr. CFO, so we have raised almost all the fees, including sewer fees. Recently, Patterson Board of Education raised 4% tax hike, which we have nothing to do. I completely understand that. But the homeowners, ultimately the tenants have to pay that regardless. My question to you is that right now, the reassessment is going on in the City of Patterson. Even if we raise only 2% tax hike, forget about that tax hike that we are speaking about. From the previous years, this year, the property value went up from 30 to 40%. If this is the case with this reevaluation, reassessment, how would this impact the taxes that people are paying now? Anybody can answer that?
So if you've made no assessment change, if you've made no judgment to your property, if you haven't done a tax appeal, the, your assessment with this revaluation is gonna go up and the rate's gonna go down. So it's no effect. Now, if you've made a tax appeal in the last year, then it might affect you. But for anybody that hasn't done a tax appeal in the last few years, the assessment goes up, the rate goes down. That's how it works.
So this is not going to impact at all, you're saying?
For the people that have not done tax appeals. If you've done a tax appeal and then your assessment changes based on that tax appeal, then your, your rate might increase, yes.
So if I'm not wrong when you're saying tax appeals, Mr. CFO, and I'm pretty sure that you're more knowledgeable about this, when you're saying tax appeal, tax appeal comes from CMA, comparative market analysis, which is if I, if I put my, if I do tax appeal on my property, it means that I have to find in my neighborhood similar or same properties and that is paying lower than my taxes. That's called, that's actually tax appeal. It does not really mean anything. What I'm trying to say is that if the average price go up, that we all have to pay, increase the taxes amount. And that reassessment taking place after pretty long time. There is no communication, clear communication was taking place from us to the resident of the City of Patterson. Is everything is very blindsided. And one thing very upsetting, which is when we spoke about this budget in the introduction, last workshop session, it was removed from the regular meeting because you had the expectation that it's not passing. But there is no initiative was taken by the administration that can we sit down with this council body that find what's the alternate solution? If you recall what happened last, last year's budget, you came up, initial budget came up like 4% some percentage, then you sit down with us, we offered our own expertise and whatever knowledge we have, and we came up with 2% some whatever number. That was, that was good initiative. That was good initiative. But this time, I felt that administration is very comfortable that this is going to go through with the allies that are sitting here and blindly is going to support. That exactly the feeling working in me. And that should not happen. So no question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have council members.
If I just may say one thing, just to clarify on what happened last year. Last year, we introduced a budget with a $25 million TA. We were asking for 27 and we adopted for 27 with 27 million. This year, we're doing exactly the same thing. We're introducing a budget with $27 million TA, we're asking for 33, and if we get the 33, it goes back to 2%. It's exactly the same thing, it's just different amounts that we're asking from transitional aid. That is exactly what happened last year. There is no other thing that happened last year. But that is, we are not allowed to introduce with more TA than we have for the prior year.
Mr. CFO, so since you are speaking, I had no question, but since you stated something, what was last year budget introduction tax hike?
2.9%.
2.9%?
I believe in introduction, it was 3.4%.
No. That was initial plan from your side, then you sat down with us when we gave you our plan, and then it came down to 2% some percentage. That's exactly what I can recall.
Okay. All right. So I know council members, I know some of you are ready for a vote, but a councilwoman, just a quick question. CFO, just on the same line, on page 25, if you look at the total public and private program offset by the revenue, by revenue, in 2024, we allocate $10,831,628. On the 2025 budget, we have in front of us $20,450,93. So we have $9.6 million over.
Those are grant funded, those are grant funding positions, those are grants. We got more grants this year than we did last year. They are both on the revenue side and on the appropriation side.
Okay, but why you going almost double? What is the rationale? Based on, that's a projection you have?
No, we have more grants this year. The grant amount this year, we have $20 million in grants. We had $10 million in grants last year. So if you go through.
So, Council President.
Council President.
I'm sorry, I got council over last way.
We're receiving.
And after you, councilwoman, I think, you know.
We're receiving a lead hazard control grant for $7 million that we didn't receive last year. So there's.
How much?
7.1, 7,170.
More?
Yes. We didn't receive that last year, we're receiving this grant this year.
Okay, all right.
Council President. May I? Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I'm looking at this budget. And the last page, number 41, actually 42, yeah, 41 and 42 the same. And all pages that I'm seeing here says adoption for year 2025. It's saying, all the notes that I see here, it says resolution for the year 2025 may be presented by taxpayers or others in 2025. In any of these documents, I see a word introduction. Okay? Now, at the end of 42, or 41, it's the same summary of appropriations, last page, but the one that says section two, open adoption, open adoption for year 2025, is what you see there. You're talking about 4% of tax increase from the school board. You're talking about, I believe is, I don't know how much is the county, a tax increase. Now 5.9 presenting in this temporary budget, or not temporary, introduction budget, that they want to call introduction. But still, at the end of the page, say that open adoption for year 2025, it is what it is. It is what it is. So without counting, you know, people talk about, okay, 5.9, right? That's city municipal taxes, right, councilman? What about the open space? What about the library? Okay? That, the library and the open space are not included in a 5.6 introduction. It's not included. I don't see a document here that says we are introduction on this budget. Now, my question is to CFO, who prepared this budget for you?
We prepared the budget.
Who is we?
The finance.
Who is finance?
My staff, me and my staff.
You and your staff? When was prepared?
The budget itself, or?
Yeah, all this document that you have here, when it was prepared?
Probably from, I would say, March till, it's a working document from now all the way until it gets adopted.
So that's justify why the former BA was in your office every time?
Excuse me?
That you had to get the assistant of the former BA for do this budget? I just want to know if you had an assistant to prepare this budget in your office? You should have to say honest, yes or no?
I'm not sure what the question is.
Do you got the assistant of the former BA to prepare this budget in your office during after hours or during the work time?
No.
Or at least a week, at least one day in a week? So the reason is, because there's nothing different here, only that some items are increased, some items representing that the revenue is going to be low. Look at the revenues from DPW, councilman, that they expecting to get. Only in one week, this past month, DPW claims that they did 10 days, almost a million something dollars, whatever it was, in tickets. And still, they're presenting here that DPW is going to do $100,000 on the appropriation in revenues. So with all your respect, all your knowledge on numbers, and you went to school for that.
For clarification, that goes through the municipal court.
If this budget is representing an inflation, you know, that is not real. It's not real. Why, if you know, if you have this relation, the state has a relation with you guys, why not present a responsible budget that the taxpayer are going to be happy to see in return back in service? You still could present, the mandatory tax increase is 2%. You could present a budget that represent 2% introduction? And still, the state is going to say, you know what, you guys need help. You guys needs help. Let me give you now, instead of 27, let me give you 30. Because you at least presented a responsible budget. Now, you gambling with the state. You make them believe the state that you doing a service to the city of Patterson representing a budget as inflated. Those numbers are not real. They are not real. Because we could have, you know, we could have the time and talk about the budget discussion and all that here. And when we say, okay, cut here, cut here, we're not going to vote for this online item, and then comes back that you don't even take the recommendation of the council, you know? Once again, ladies and gentlemen, we sending to the state a letter of intent that this is what they want to do. But I think that will be the letter intent is telling the state, listen, by law, you tell us that we only could increase 2%. This is a responsible budget without hurting the taxpayer money. Please help us with more funding, with more aid, you know, to the city of Patterson. And then we could come back and say, the administration represent the city of Patterson taxpayers. Right now, right now, this is, everything I see here, municipal data 2025, at the end, it says open adoption. That means at the end, they could say, oh, this is what they asked, this is what they get. Okay? So, you know, last question, to the chair, they haven't answered. But you know, if you want to answer, you could answer now after the last question. You prepared the budget, March. And do you have the luxury time in a week that the BA is here to go over this budget and say, you know what, we could save taxpayer money? Have you presented this, have you sit down with him and say, do you think this is the right thing to do? Or you think we could do some cut here, cut over here, present the right numbers? Do you present it to the BA?
So I'm going to jump in on this one, councilman. So I have been here for a week. I have had meetings with the state twice now. I've had meetings with the CFO a couple times throughout the last week. This is not an easy decision. Budgets are not meant to be easy, budgets are meant to be tough. What I'm saying to the council is I've had a week to look at this. I know what the laws are pertaining to this introduction, that it's something that it is mandated and it's something that we have to do. Do I want to come back with a 5.6? Absolutely not. I wouldn't accept that either. What I'm asking for is more time. What I'm asking for is the opportunity to really dive into this budget to see what there is that can be adjusted. I want to be able to look at this with our financial professionals, I want to be able to look at this more with our auditors. I just, I've had, I've had seven days.
So let's do this. So let's do this, Mr. BA.
I don't anticipate adopting until we have the state numbers.
So they gave us, they gave us to May 30, right? Something like that?
That's correct, councilman. We have another meeting.
Let's do this. My recommendation is, can you go back to the table of numbers with your CFO? And if Council President want to do a special meeting next week, he could do so and probably, probably record that the next week, we still, we still.
We do, councilmember, we do meeting on the 20 also as well, so May 20 also. The meeting, I think that, you know.
Selfishly, like, there's the answer, I want to be able to provide.
But Council President just recommend you, just, listen, just in some item that he just presented today, he could recommend you some item that could be cut right there.
Especially like the first, that increase of 4% on salary wage, I think that that definitely could be reduced. And we all know that 2% is a cap that we have in the city, we have 4% either. So it will be definitely, it will be beneficial for everybody to go over and take a look at those numbers. So we have another meeting on the 20, councilmembers. And we could have a special meeting, councilman Davila.
Okay, so before, Council President, Council President, before I wrap up.
Thank you very much, Council President.
I haven't finished, I haven't finished. So they gave us a to May 30. We could, we could take action. Council President.
Just a minute, just a minute, councilmember.
We're not violating the law, listen.
No, we are. It was past due, it was supposed to be in March.
Councilwoman Davila, I understand your anxious to approve this right away, but today. But let me tell you something, the letter says here that to have to to May 30th, 2025, there was some recommendation made by Council President, there's other recommendation made from Councilwoman Mims and him and me myself, let's take action today. If it fail, you come back on before the 25th, the 30th, sorry, before the 30th, and convene and bring a responsible budget to represent the taxpayer of the city of Patterson. I'm not saying not taking action. We got to the 30th.
So, 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 Madam Clerk, so roll call on this item, Madam Clerk?
So, Council President, thank you very much. You know, sometimes people like to hear themselves speak and just use a responsible budget, responsible budget. You know what a responsible budget is? It's what's before us. The responsibility that we have, we are past due. So this whole thing of waiting, you want to continue extending it, fine. I'm here to take action today. This item from what you hear here, it's going to fail, we know. But it's on this agenda to take action. Now, I am going to say this, and I'm going to ask this question because there were a few individuals who did ask, we have a surplus. So I'm going to ask the CFO and the BA, okay, and put it on record, why can't you use the surplus?
23 million.
24.
I believe, and I'm going to have the CFO clarify that, but I do believe that that is a part of the MOU that is with the state that we have to maintain, I believe it's 25? Is it 25 million? But I think it's a 15 or 10% number.
Okay, so can I hear that again?
He's going to explain it.
So we're not allowed to use anything that we can replenish.
I'm sorry, how much is the 25 million dollars?
24 million dollars.
We have 24 million surplus.
Yes.
Correct.
On the setting aside, but by law, we cannot use those 25 million dollars based on the state guideline, the MOU.
MOU, yes. We have to keep that there.
So when the community comes out and says, why, where is the 24? Why can't you use that to balance a budget, right? That is the reason why. Again, we'll go back to the MOU. A lot of what happens is we have to look at the document that's before us. If we didn't have this money, this transitional aid and no MOU? But I'm going to tell you right now, I don't know who here, because you know what, they keep talking about all responsible budget. I want to know what items are going to be cut? If you're okay with cutting police, if you're okay with cutting fire, if you're okay with cutting recreation, that's what I want to know.
Okay. All right.
So then they can go ahead and present to you the 2%, which is what's mandated. Then let's see, who on this council is going to vote for that?
So, so, councilmembers, 1:06, please, let's make your comment through all the votes. So, Madam Clerk, let's vote on this budget. Right after that, I will take the agenda and I will go over the agenda with Madam Clerk. It's 1:07 a.m. So roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number 11. Is it on?
Yes.
Everything was already said. They've been saying over and over, Mr. Green shirt man, we going to catch it. And I'm letting you know right now, they can say whatever they want to say, but we going to catch it. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila.
In agreement with my colleague, Councilwoman Cotton, you know, a lot has been said today. And I'm not saying that every colleague of mine, you know, doesn't have a reason, you know, to put forth, you know, in terms of not wanting to increase. I'm not there. But please don't be fooled, today's item is an introduction that is mandated by statute. Please, if you can, Mr. Corporation Council, get me, please, the statute so I could just put it on record. There's a statute in place that we must follow, okay? And we are past that statute and date, all right? And we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. So I'm not putting in jeopardy the 27 million. I'm not. The city has requested additional because we can't, see, prices continue to increase. We approve, right, contracts, like we vote on contracts, right? So I want to know who here is going to vote and say, you know what, no increases this year? It's impossible. How do you want to continue to do business and stay flat and stay the same? You can't. So with that said, I am not voting today for an adoption of a budget. I am not voting to increase 5.9%. It's not happening today. I'm doing what I'm supposed to do responsibly, okay? And that is to make sure that we get the full transitional aid that we're requesting and following the mandate that was given to us in writing. And I am not getting fined weekly or daily, whatever it is, okay? My vote is yes for the introduction.
Councilwoman, council colleague.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You know what is irresponsible? Even the statute said to introduction and we have a deadline date. Council, we did not know. Until we got the letter, so who is responsible for it? The administration. Okay? So who is responsible for it?
Councilman, you know it's March 31st.
I didn't know, I did not know. It was never introduced in March, before March 31st, March 31st. He said he started working in March in the budget. It came from our CFO's own mouth. Okay, that's another thing. The introduction of the budget should reflect the adoption of the budget. Okay? Another thing. Also, I spoke to member of the, some of the members of the administration, and I gave them some suggestion. It was completely ignored. Well, I would like to see a budget with a 2%, which is mandated by the state. That's one thing. Another thing, for time being, is it on? For time being, I suggested that we cut all the OTs in every department. Okay? Also, other. Also, other, the line item, other expenditure, meaning buying the furniture, buying this, buying that for the each department. Another thing I suggested was hiring freeze. Why don't you look at those, take off those line items and see what we come up with? What's the percentage? Well, hopefully, you know, when you, if it, if it doesn't get introduced to an adoption, if it doesn't pass tonight, if it passed tonight, oh, well, I'm not supporting it now, tonight. But if it passed tonight, hopefully you could look into my suggestion for the adoption. If it doesn't pass, hopefully you could look into it before the introduction. My vote is no.
Thank you, Councilman. Council, Councilwoman Mims?
So. Let me show you what responsible looks like. We have an item before us, well, we have an item before us. We have a letter from DCA telling us that if we don't adopt by May 31st, that they're going to fine each councilmember $25,000. But let me show you what responsible is like. We don't even have a resolution, so I don't know how anyone's voting. We have no resolution signed. Nothing's uploaded and nothing is here. We're voting on a piece of paper without the proper documentation. Oh, now we're getting it. We, we didn't have this. It's just being, we were voting on something. We didn't even know if it was signed, sealed, delivered or nothing. It's not uploaded. I love you too, but. So we got to make sure we have the information to make sure. For me, as Councilman Colleague said, we asked for it to be reduced. I commend, I know Mark, you just got here and I think, you know, I know tomorrow morning, well, in a couple hours, your wife is going to have a baby. But I think he should be given the time to try to work with the council with some of our ideas and some of the things we're, we're saying tonight about the reports of where this money is. So we can bring this to a place where it's more digestible for our residents and even for this council because the residents elected us to do a job to make sure that we're not, whether it's introduced or adopted, we're not presenting 5.6%. I, I just can't do that in the face of the, that come to the mic, that's on the phone, that's emailing and, and we get so many emails from them, Drew City Hall. I know we could do better. So I'm just going to say that. I know we could do better and I know you're going to help us get there. So with that being stated, I cannot support 5.6. Just thinking about in school when it says, I can't support it here, I can't support it there, I can't support it anywhere. So I can't support 5.6. My vote is no.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Omar?
So I'm just going to be very brief. I'm going to support the introduction and I'm going to work closely with the administration and make the appropriate cuts. Now, if, if we don't get the 33 million, but we'll wait on that. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Newton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, City of Patterson. So the first meeting, I believe, took place at the DCA in March. When I sit down at the DCA, two of my council colleagues were in present. When you're speaking about 5.6%, I had multiple argument with the DCA representation. And at a time, I was told that it will be personally sued if you don't support it. Just, just recall. I left the meeting, I said, I'm not going to support that 5.6% hike regardless of what's going to happen. Now, we are trying to state right here in the meeting that it's the last minute, we do not have enough time. I don't want the administration take, make it a norm that come to the last minute and, and, and push us to support something. And that should not happen. If you know something important, you should show up to the council on timely manner. This is your responsibility. After the DCA meeting, this budget introduction came straight to the council. No council workshop session, no separate meeting with the council members. And, and I am personally saying that I stated that this kind of budget, which is hoping on $33 million transitional aid, totally based on it, is a hope, is not a strategy and a city cannot run on a hope. We need a Plan B and a strategic plan for the future. As you all know this, recently Patterson Board of Education raised 4% tax hike. When a significant percentage of the property taxes go to the Patterson Board of Education. And this is, this is a hike that, that burden has to take to all the property owners and ultimately it's going to pass to the tenants. So we all have to get impacted. When all the inflation, the hikes in every directions, people are about to lose their properties. When you're talking about the homelessness, we're actually doing opposite. We are pushing people out of their homes by doing all the things that we are doing right now. We raised all the fees, including sewer, sewer fees in the expectation that people are going to take, take less or decrease the tax burden. But we don't see any kind of changes. And recently, we have received, unfortunately, for some reason, I don't know, I was not included to the email, received a letter stating that if we do not introduce budget before the May 30th, then $25 fine will be charged per day to the council members. I want to state right here to the public. I can take this $25, $25 burden to my shoulder, no problem. But I cannot introduce a budget which has no plan, which is going to, going to unhouse you, bring more frustration to you. On top of this, the services is going down by down, day by day. If we do not talk about this introduction at this point, the city, the administration is not going to take any of the things seriously. They are not going to care what the services people are getting or not. If people pay a dollar, people deserve the dollar service from us. That, that's, that's what, that's what the taxes stand for. But our situation is different. Taxes going high, services going down. There is no connection. We are just talking about the time and time sensitive, but we're not talking about the tax burden, the situation the Patterson is going through. People spoke about the public safety and, and response rate of the Patterson Police Department. People spoke about the cleanliness in the city, the services that we have, the frustrations that people are going through. We are not speaking about that. And budget has to reflect the services that people are getting. So City of Patterson, introduction, adoption doesn't matter. We cannot just depend on transitional aid. Another thing you should know. We are just giving that, oh, we receive transitional aid because of that we have to do minimum 2% tax hike by MOU. I understand that. But just depending on transitional aid is not a strong administration. We have to find a path that we don't have to depend on transitional aid. Find a plan five to 10, 10, 10 years that we don't have to depend on transitional aid. That should be our plan. If we really talk about the strong administration. We are talking about the administration, we're talking about the time sensitive, we are talking about transitional aid, minimum 2%. That minimum 2% every, every year tax hike, how long people going to stay in their homes? How long you think people can take the burden? Even if you pay off your house, the senior citizens, they were happy after 30 years of paying mortgage. They were saying that I paid off. But trust me, this is not happiness at this point. Because they have to pay even more because of our tax burden that we are pushing on people's shoulder. We are acting like we are not part of these people. We are acting like we are not part of this city. That's exactly how we are acting. These are our people. These are our families. Just know this, when we are, we are giving this extra burden on their shoulder, they have to survive. And survive how comes? Whether they have to cut on their groceries or whether they have to go to the shopping mall to take their children out. They have to come somewhere and we don't even think about it. So this administration has to be more serious and, and have to find a strategic plan. And the plan has the intention that we don't have to depend on transitional aid in the near future. With that being said, my vote is strong no. Come on.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Velez? Councilman Velez?
So 121, Councilmember, let's finish, let's finish the vote, please.
First of all, I don't know if I'm missing a piece here, but we didn't have a public hearing to people who expressed themselves in this introduction. I didn't, I didn't recall unless I was out of the country that this, this public hearing was performed or not. I see here that this, this last resolution was prepared in April 2025. The one that I received, April 2025. You know, once again, I respect the letter that the state sent us. It gave us the due date on May 30, 2025. That give time to the administration to go over the other expenses, other items in the budget that they could represent the right numbers that really represent the taxpayers of the City of Patterson. I think that some recommendation was made by Council President and other recommendation was made way back from us as the council members. And, and I recall when they switch calendar year, oh, sorry, fiscal year to calendar year because supposedly they was going to present the budget way before the end of the year. Ladies and gentlemen, we don't have short memory. The administration forced us to change fiscal year to calendar year to go align with the state budget. I recall that. And still, we are in May and they haven't present a responsible introduction budget for we could send it to the state. I don't have no doubts that these numbers reflect a clone of the past business administrator and not a real fact budget for the City of Patterson. Saying that, we still got, what's today's date? We got three more weeks. They, we are responsible legislator, we're going to be here making sure, making sure the administration represent the taxpayer, the city person, Mr. BA, that will give you time to go over other expenses. Some real numbers on revenues and some real numbers of introduced budget that not reflect. If you tell me we're going to present a introduction budget of 2.50, now we could understand that we could see, you know, work on it, but 5.6. We sending a letter to the state that this is the intention of the administration. No matter what they're going to give us, they still have the intention to increase tax by 5.65% in the City of Patterson. Saying that, you know, if they fine us, you know, I know the other council member will bail me out with $25 a week. A day, sorry, a day. We could pay little by little. But, but, you know, I have to stand with my taxpayer. And this, and this, and this decision of mine is because I watched that Zoom meeting and there was no plan presented if the state decide to not give us $30 million. Saying that, good morning. My vote is no to this introduction budget.
Councilman, Council President?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You know, talking about the budget and voting on the budget is more than voting on the number. It's voting on, on the hope of the people in the city. It's voting on, you know, the biggest concern and the burn of our resident, which is taxes. Every time, and as I mentioned this before, I have a lot of senior homeowners in the third ward in the city. And I, when every, every time I visit those family, the first topic is taxes. We have a lot of family that they live on a fixed income. They don't get a raise. They don't get a solid increase every year. And, but we increasing taxes every year. And that's one of the number one reason why people choosing to leave the City of Patterson, to move out of this town because the taxes don't reflect the amount of services that they receive, the quality of service that they're supposed to receive. And we do leaving a lot of money on the table. I've been the one speaking about consistently about the street cleaning, going out without inspector. We're living thousands of dollars on the table. I've been the one speaking about the building department, you know, having people waiting for years, a month for permit that could generate thousands of dollars to the city. Not enforcing the law that we have in the book to correct the problem that we're facing in the city. We're leaving millions of dollars on the table. So when we sit down with a family and we talk about increasing their taxes, the first question is like, what about, what are you guys doing about this? What are you guys doing about the condition of the city? You know, are you guys giving ticket to those people that are breaking the law? How can you guys generate more revenue? So we need to continue with this discussion. Today, on the, on page 17, I, I showed the administration that they have 4% increase, $4,776,795 over the last year budget on salary wage. So that's 4%. We could reduce it to 2% and we'll be compliant. We'll be giving out the 2% that, that, that we have to increase, but we will reduce 2%. That's over $2 million on that line item only. So, and if we go on page 19, you could look at it as you look at it. We have a different, a difference on the total general appropriation by municipal purpose with $5.5 million also as well. So those are line item that we got to look at it, that we have to see how can we reduce it. So you already have one that we could reduce over $2 million on one shot. We have to do better. We have to get back into the table. Mr. CFO, let's get all those ideas because, you know, we working for the people. And this work that we doing now, we're going to have to do it later. And I'm just saying this, we've been lucky because last year we asked for 25. They state gave us 25 and we asked for 27 and they gave it to us. Now we asking for $33 million. We had an election in November. We don't know what's going to happen, which is the new governor that is going to be in Trenton. We have to make those tough decision now. As a business owner, I got to work with my budget and I cannot spend money that I don't have. Let's do better and let's work on that. So with that being said, I'm looking forward, Seva, to have that conversation about all those line item and, and, and we could, that way we could come back with something stronger, something that represent the voice and the concern of the resident also as well. My vote is no, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Council President. The votes are three in favor, five against, one absent.
Council President?
No, I'm sorry. What was the vote?
The votes were three in favor.
Two in favor.
Three in favor.
Three in favor.
Five against, one absent. Resolution fails.
All right, so, so the, so it's 1:20, it's, it's 1:30 a.m.
Council President, Council President.
So we have to close.
Before, before you close the meeting, you, I just want to remind everyone here that they already appropriate from this budget 2025 money from it. So you imagine what's going to happen.
Okay, so, so what we're going to do now is 1:30 a.m. So we're going to close the special meeting. We're going back into the workshop. And, and, and Madam Clerk, we're going to work on the agenda tomorrow. It's 1:30. Let's close the workshop. Let's close the special meeting.
We closing the special meeting now.
So motion to close the special meeting. So move, move by Councilwoman, Councilman Colleague and second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilman Velez. Roll call to close the special meeting.
Just really quick, Corporation Counsel, I'll call you tomorrow because I had an item that should have been on first read on this agenda, so I will call you tomorrow. So possibly it will be on for next week. I will. Thank you.
7:30 in the morning. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call to close the special meeting of May 13, 2025. Councilwoman Cotton? Councilwoman Cotton, closing.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Before we start with roll call. So I know we have members of the Peruvian community here. Just a minute, Council. We're not taking any form of action today. We're not voting on anything, just to let everybody know. But I really want to, you know, thank you guys for being here and having this discussion. But I know everybody will make the comment during the closing. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call to close the special meeting. Councilwoman Cotton, Councilwoman Davila.
Okay.
Okay.
It's true. It's true. Public.
I'm sorry. I wasn't here by when we started meeting. No.
No, no.
No, no, no. I'm sorry, Councilman. I came a little late after the discussion, but let's open the public portion. It's now open for the special meeting. Members of the community that we should speak on this special meeting.
Seeing a lot of people out there, but nobody want to speak.
Okay. Motion to close the public portion. Move by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Cotton. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call to close this.
No.
You want to speak?
No, that's fine.
Yeah, he wants to speak.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Or why is he putting the taxes too high? Why is it rental? Don't give him money for illegal commerce. They give more money than the people say today for putting the community more high. The business bringing more people, I need people do for work, but I don't have the money. And the governor said to me, oh, I need support for you for making more money. You do your business. The government don't do nothing. Every day only put the taxes high, high, high. I have a business, people work for me, but the people don't have money for chain oil. Do the brave sign, nothing. In that community, no money. Nobody got no money in that community. The governor ain't money, money, money. He don't contribute money to the community and give the illegal commerce. I don't need to bring a bank or a million like he says, twenty, twenty. The illegal commerce, if you want more, half a billion or two hundred. The community coming up.
I like him to get some help.
When he has the money, I pay the community, five, three kids work for me and teach them business to the street. And the street nobody have the money. That's what I think outside. Try and donate money, donate that. We want to donate two. I need everything. Nobody have the money.
That's true.
I change the oil we pour in two big time for seventy on the hand for you. Nobody have the money. Nobody have the money. Everybody say, I don't have the money. I say, yeah, the government, I just don't give him money. Illegal commerce.
Opportunity. Nobody give opportunity to the illegal commerce.
Yeah.
Yeah. I told you to the woman, my faith to faith. He no believe. I take it. He only talking blah, 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 blah. He not do nothing. I want to see his faith, but I want to see his faith, faith to faith, but he liar. He real liar. That's why Democrat, I'm sorry, everybody here Democrat. I don't believe for Democrat no more.
Yeah. Thank you, brother. I appreciate it. So motion to close by, it was motion to close by Davila and second by Councilwoman Cotton. Roll call to close the public portion of the special meeting, Madam Clerk.
Roll call to close the public portion of the special meeting. Councilwoman Cotton. Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Colleague.
Yes.
Councilwoman Memes.
Point of privilege. She had her hands up. I don't think you saw her. She was trying to speak.
Oh, I didn't notice, but yeah. About this. Yeah. Go ahead, Maria.
She's speaking on the budget.
I don't know. Just we just have a, we just have a public, public portion, I mean.
Does it have to be budget related or can I talk about something?
I knew the item, but now she's there.
She's there. You're there. Express your concern, Mariela. You're there.
Thank you very much.
Speak close to the mic.
One second, Council President. This has happened throughout the entire night. You can't change the rules for one and for another.
I'm not changing.
The public hearing that is here today is pertaining to the items on the public and the special meeting. Are you speaking on behalf of any of the items that we took action today in the special meeting?
No, I wanted to invite the other Peruvian institution to join us. That's all I wanted to say.
That's good.
Okay. All right. So council members, thank you, Mariela. Council members, 1:35. There was a public portion. The person's there. She say what she need to say. Why we have to be so rude about something? Why?
Council President, because there's an order in place, Council President.
Let's continue roll call. Council members, 1:30.
And we're in the middle, and we were in the middle of a roll call.
Let's continue, Madam Clerk. Please continue.
You can't change the rules for one and not do it for the other.
Councilwoman.
And I'm putting that on record.
Councilwoman Memes saw her racing her. I didn't saw her and I'm sorry. I do apologize. That's the reason I'll call you in the mic. If you see, I don't stop nobody from speaking. We got 47 speaker and we continue the meeting. So, all right. So let's continue. Let's continue the roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Omar. Your vote? Thank you. Oh, you do?
No, she didn't.
I checked. Yes. Well, Councilwoman Memes.
So before, this is to, okay, we're going to come back, right, to close the meeting? All right. So I'll talk about that later. My vote is yes to close the special meeting.
Thank you. Councilman Uden.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Velez.
So I'm not going to wait later because the gentleman, I understood what he said. He said, like I say, that mayor always blah, 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 blah. Not me. This gentleman here lost his property at the flood. The governor walks with him and listening to his concern. No one in the state came down and say, here's money for you to put your feet up in your business. The mayor walk and say that he was going to cover him, that he was going to take care of him and the governor was there. Have you see a penny? No. So I know this gentleman quite good. He's not talking about me. He's talking about the mayor. Promise, the governor promise and all that stuff in the flooding. So I know I got good relationship with him and I know why he suffer. So, and what he trying to say is, Mr. BA, Mr. BA, Mr. BA, Mr. BA, it's good to you listeners. What the budget should reflect, and that's what he's saying, that this budget should reflect help for business owners, help for those in struggling. $68 million came to this city. $68 million came to this city and not 2% were invested to small business in the city of Patterson. So saying that, Madam Clerk, we need to put a closure at the at the agenda for special meeting for we could educate and advise the resident that the public portion for special meeting is only for the items in question. For they could be advised and they probably know the procedure. Saying that, I learned from him. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Council President.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk, to close the special meeting.
Close the public portion.
Right. So motion to close the special meeting.
The items are eight in favor, one absent. The public portion is hereby closed of the special meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That was to close the public portion. Now, can I have a motion to close the special meeting? Move by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilman Evi, or Uden and Velez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, to close the special meeting.
Roll call to close the special meeting. Councilwoman Cotton.
Councilwoman Cotton.
Say something.
Closing the special meeting.
Congratulations, Mr. BA.
Yes, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Councilwoman Davila.
We're voting on closing the special meeting and resuming the workshop?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
Okay. Councilman Colleague?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to clarify something. Gentlemen spoke about the small business funding. There are many funding available, even during COVID, during FEMA is always small business funding. You have to follow through the process. Don't expect somebody to bring you a check.
Congratulations.
You got a small business, take the check. There are processes you have to apply and there are a lot of grand money too. So you have to follow the process. You're just not going to get a check sitting at home. Also, Council President, I'm requesting, I see an item about a festival, Peruvian festival. We heard, we spoke, we heard on the public portion, they're still here. Hopefully, even though you're going to decide all the item is going to go consent or regular. I would like, in front of them, I would like you to take item number 36 after we close the special meeting. Item 36? Yeah, right. No, we're voting on closing. Item number 36 is a festival. City Council, we did not, we do not approve any parade licenses. We got nothing to do with it. We only vote on festival. So there's the item number 36. Hopefully, if there's a discussion needed, we discuss it and we move forward with the item. I request to be on regular.
Thank you, Council President. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Memes.
We have, we have a, Mr. Garcia, we have a, we have an item on the agenda. All the paperwork, everything is correct. We don't do the paperwork. We're going to move forward and we're going to vote on it. And that's all. That's the only, I'm not going to go back and forth. Council members here, they understand the process. We have an item on the agenda. You guys been here since early. You don't have an item on the agenda, I don't think. It's not on the agenda. You here with some request. Hey, you bring your item in front of the agenda. I'll vote yes for it as well. I'll vote, I'll be the first one to support your festival when all the paperwork comes in front of me in the workshop or a regular meeting.
We'll have discussion after roll call, trees item before.
Thank you. I voted already, Council President. I'll be the first one to vote on it. Bring the paperwork, bring it on the, put it on the agenda. Thank you.
Councilwoman Memes.
So, so I want to say congratulations to our new BA. His wife, they will be having a baby in a couple hours. So I want to congratulate him and his wife on their new baby. I also want to congratulate my daughter. She got promoted to principal tonight as we were sitting here and I'm very excited. She's born and raised Patterson and has been in the educational system for M. Marilyn.
Marilyn?
I don't know the name. This is a new school, brand new school, brand new building, brand new facility in Marilyn. So I'll, in Marilyn. She was here. They never gave her, I don't want to say it on the mic. But congratulations to my daughter, Dr. Jasmine. Tonight, she was voted on unanimously approved. She went through seven rounds of her interview process and as we sat here tonight unanimously approves her and she spoke so well and my grandbaby got on the mic and said, wow. So that was approval for me. So congratulations, Dr. Jazz. I'll be down to celebrate you in a couple days. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Omar.
Special meeting.
Yep. We're resuming at the workshop, as well as with.
Are you going to continue workshop or not?
Thank you.
Just resume and closing.
Resume and closing. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So since we are going to be, right after this, we're going to close the workshop session as well. So I just would like to mention that when we do street renaming, I want to make sure that the committee is sitting down. Committee has to have meeting before it comes to the workshop because it's going to be, two of them are on the agenda. It's one of my very close person, John DeCano, which I'm completely supporting. I could, you know, I love to see myself there as well as a sponsor. However, I like to see the committee is sitting and discussing. It did not go through, no. Second thing is item number 54, item number, okay, which is item number 16 I'm talking about. Council President, no, no, we are talking about, yes, special meeting, but since we are closing it. Item number 54, I'd like to state that mayor cannot sponsor any rename of the street. It has to have one of the council members. Item number 54, what, another renaming of the street, which is Wall Street, just, I am not against any of them. I am completely support and I love to see myself as a sponsor. However, committee has to meet, discuss before it comes to the workshop session. Regarding, regarding the Peruvian, item number 36. Regarding, the public is still sitting here from Peruvian community and wonderful people on the both sides. I'd like to state that, Council President, Council President, I want to before to close the public portion.
Council members, just council members.
I wanted to, since the complaint appeared here, people provided the statement that they requested to Delama Call, Director Delama Call about the application and application was not served. I believe that the director has to answer the question, whether she has to appear here in the council or whether has to write her written statement. Because if it does not happen, there will be all this pick and choose. It's not about this wonderful community. It's about any communities, any entities that's going to take place. So that kind of conversation has to be cleared out with the director. The director to say who applied, what's the situation or not. And again, I like to see both groups are working together and we like to celebrate together. But answer has to be cleared out. When she is blaming for this and that, this is what I don't want to hear. I want whether written statement from her or she has to come here in the council. So I'm going to email her tomorrow morning, whether she's coming here in the next regular meeting on the 20th and explaining what happened with the situation or she has to write a written statement. If she doesn't do that, it means that she's hiding something. That's exactly what I want to state. So with that being said, my vote is yes. Dela has to cover what happened. She has to stay here or she has to write something what happened.
She don't have to come before.
Okay.
How we going make it? Okay, but where is it? I'm telling.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman. What are you saying? They gave, they gave the copy.
Councilwoman, let's finish, let's finish, Councilman, let's finish the roll call and then we could just have a quick discussion about this. Let Velez vote, let me vote and then that way we could just wrap this up, okay? Go ahead, Velez.
You can't make nobody come in front of him. Who is he? He can't make no city employee come in front of him. He can't do that. So don't, don't pretend to.
You have to rise. You have to rise.
Because he cannot.
Councilwoman.
Wait, wait, wait. First of all, I like to, no, no, no. This is, this is kind of like very disrespectful, Councilwoman. I respect you. First of all, who is he to bring the employee here? If any employee just pick and choose, I have right to ask her question and she has to answer the question. Whether she has to write an email, whether she's coming here, but it cannot say that I cannot ask question.
Councilman, you're out of order. You shouldn't be yelling.
Just council, okay. Council members, Councilman Velez.
Don't be lying to the people.
All right. So I don't know why.
Be respectful to the ladies. There's no point of yelling.
So Councilwoman, please, may I wrap up, please?
Like that. You fooling people. Don't fool people.
Okay, so. Have you noticed that before I speak, there's always argument, had to bring the peace, right? So ladies and gentlemen, all the respect of the two groups that's here. They've been here all night long. They express, I listened to the group of the regional Peruvian parade and also the one that is established now. One of the most common that I heard tonight from these two groups was about half hour ago. We asking that we work together. That was about half hour ago that happens. No, 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 no. I'm saying today, tonight. Let's work together tonight. But I recall from this chambers, when the two group was here in the dilemma, I stated, Dr. Tello and Dr. Castillo, you guys are doctors. You find a forensic way to unite the Peruvian community, right? So hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Because you know what? Let me say this. I'm not going to take blame of the mess of the mayor or any employees here for patriotism of any group. or any employees here for patriotism of any group, of any group. Councilmen colleagues just stated. Bring your application complete. Let's put it to a vote, and we do that. Now, the problem is, who's gonna give authorization downstairs to accept their application? Who's holding that? And to be fair, this process of the Peruvian parade should be managed from the beginning the right way. The right way. What happened? We have a closure in the ordinance or DPW that you cannot celebrate two festivals in a month in the same street. Same day, right? So, let's be honest. We recommend that one group does it one day, and the other group does it the other day, and everybody be happy. Now, I understand the sentiment of twenty-seven Julio. I know the sentiment. Because that's the official day of the independence of Peru. And everybody wanna celebrate at the same day of the Peru on the twenty-seven of July. But I don't wanna hear nobody from the Peruvian community saying that it's our fault. No, we are always trying to work with anything that they put in front of us. I even recommend that the title of the festival not include Peruvian Parade. Because people were thinking that we was Peruvian Parade. But the title, we could put a resolution to approve festival without putting the organization. We could put in the body, who is the organization, but the title, okay, was confusing people around. Listen, community, especially Latino community. You saw what happened today. You saw what happened today. Let's dance together, and let's get the common sense of this. If they already had the parade this year, the other organization could have the festival. Into next year, probably you guys get together, create a new board, with group from here, a group from over there, work together for the benefit of the Peruvian community. And when we talk about the benefit of the Peruvian community, we need to make sure that egos are out of the table. I had a meeting at the Peruvian consulate last week. And when I heard the numbers of people running for president, I said, for real? Forty-five. For real? And I say, can they get together and make this happen? So ladies and gentlemen, Councilman Uding is passionate when it comes up to a process of follow procedures, you know, he wanna make a statement, but Councilman Kalik, you stated right. The BA's not here. Mr. Bushi, I don't know if you could talk to administration. If they wanna bring their application in, you know, there's no such thing that say who put it first or who put it second, who put it third. There's no such thing. We wanna work with all of you guys. We wanna celebrate with all you guys. And we cannot ignore the legacy of the regional Peruvian parade. And we can ignore also the individuals that one fashion or the other thinks that they could do it better. Let's be honest, okay? So saying that, hopefully, we don't get crossfire after tonight. More than we have been. One fifty-four night. Good morning, everyone. My vote is to close this, this special meeting. And adjourn the workshop at the same time.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think that during the closing of this action, we already addressing this matter on item number thirty-six, which is the resolution on the Patterson Club, chapter one twenty-nine bizarre, addressing the license for the New Jersey Peruvian Inc. to conduct the festival. This is the resolution that we have on the agenda from the new organization. And the biggest complaint has been because the original Peruvian Parade Inc. was blocked from introducing the application, and it's been denied. They've been submitting multiple documents, letters, and expressing that. And that was the main reason. I put the discussion on the floor now, before we take from our action. I have a lot of respect for the Peruvian community, for all the leaders. Guillermo Garcia, I know how much I respect him. Yumariela, Dr. Tello, and Dr. Castillo, phenomenal leaders in the Peruvian community. And for me, I feel, you know, my heart is broken just by see the community so divided. And but on top of that, as an elected official, it's my responsibility to get to the bottom of what happening. Because there's a person on charge that work for the city. She doesn't work directly for us, but she work under the mayor, under the administration. And I need to make sure that she was fair with the process. That's the only thing. I'm not taking side over here. It's already bad as it is because I wanna see my Peruvian community together. But the Peruvian, the original organizational stated that they can first, that it been denied, and now we have this. Bottom line, we have this legislation. Now, Councilman will be have all the right as an elected official to request the presence of any director and to request the information. Now, we want the director in charge, Della McCall, to send the entire council a full, an explanation of what exactly happened, because we wanna hear from her, because we have all the right to question her. All the right to question her. That's what we here for. So that's what is on the agenda. And I would love to find a way to see you guys be able to put the application. Any council member, we could vote. So we are an independent body, and each council member is one vote. I'm one vote. And I would love to see it. Because since we are the one that could approve it, I want fairness. You vote for whoever you choosing one. If you guys cannot come together, all I want to see, I would love to see our community, our Peruvian community together united. I don't see any reason why. I don't really see it. Unfortunately, Peruvian Parade Inc. doesn't have an application here because you guys been denied. That's what I have. I'm gonna wait for that detail of Della and see, that one her to explain to us what happened, because I want fairness here. That's what I want. I like to sleep in peace. And on the necessary concern, I will support and allow and the person to use their power to block any institution. I'm not here for that, and that's not me. So expecting to have that, and let's wait for next week for the vote. And you guys reach out to her, and you have all the right to submit your application. You have all the right to submit it. With that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Council President. The votes are seven in favor, two absent. The special meeting is hereby adjourned.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President, before you close, there is something that I'd like for Corporation Council, because it all sounds good. It all sounds good, that you have a week to put this application in. And it isn't so. What's being told to you today, it isn't so, okay? No council member has the right to direct anything through our Faulkner Act, okay? And he's gonna read the statute and put it on record. Everything goes through the administration, through the mayor, okay? Everything. So no council member here can ask an employee to come here, and you question them. Absolutely not. So Corporation Council, I'd like for you to please put that on record. Secondly, I'm just gonna say this. They continue to fool you, okay? And I am tired of my name being dragged all over the floor as I am a culprit, I'm the one dividing or doing this. That is not so. But at the end of the day, it doesn't matter. People are gonna believe what they wanna believe. I know that I'm not involved. I do nothing on the day-to-day operations. I have nothing to do with licensing. As a matter of fact, okay, I've never stepped in that office, ever stepped foot in the twelve almost years that I've been here, into that office, okay? So whoever says that it's me, that I'm the culprit, that I'm helping this, absolutely not, and I'm putting that on record. And I could stand on that, okay? But I am tired of some of my colleagues making you believe, oh, somebody did something wrong. How dare I say that someone, that an employee, did something wrong? You're supposed to use the word allegedly. And based on the information that I saw here, I saw a letter of intent from Peruvian Parade. It's in here. I saw it. But I didn't see a complete application. And you have three different people filing things. You have Dr. Castillo on a letter of intent, okay? Then you have another months later, the next year over, you have Mrs. Eclen on it. So it is not a complete, and it's not just filling out the application. You have to meet with police chief, fire, listen, fire, police, DPW, contracts, insurance. So all I'm saying is, when somebody says to you. No, so, but that's what I'm saying. So but that, those are the things. Listen, I cannot tell you why, okay? I'm just tired of my name being dragged as though I'm the one in the middle. So with that said, with that said, Corporation Council, can you please put on record that no one on this council can address the city employee and demand them to come here and question their work, okay? That it should be done through the administration as per our Faulkner. Can you please, Council President?
But you can write.
Allow Corporation Council, because you're seeing things here. Like, we can do that.
Councilwoman, I'm waiting for you to finish, okay? Corporation Council?
Council President, may I?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Davila, for that inquiry. So pursuant to the Faulkner Act forty, colon, six-nine, A dash thirty-seven point one, all contact with the employees and all actions and communications concerning the administration of government and the provision of municipal services shall be through the mayor or his designee, except as otherwise provided by law. Nothing in this section shall be construed to prohibit the council's inquiry into any act or problem of the administration of the municipality. Any council member may, at any time, require a report on any aspect of the government of municipality by making a written request to the mayor.
Thank you. So very clear, so very clear. We, listen, I could send an email to the administration making request for explanation from that person that work there. That's our power. That's our power to hold the administration accountable. Listen, and I'm not accusing anybody. But listen, if I'm sitting here, and I've been responsible, and I know and I see that something is not right, I have all the right to make a request of clarification in writing from that department. Let's just leave it at that. Let's not get twisted.
And you could request the mayor to come here publicly.
You could request the mayor, the director. This is our power. So.
Nobody's not questioning what you said. You said you demanded her to come in front of here. That's what was said. Now, he's saying that we need to write. Listen, he said that she need to submit a report of what happened. You said she was, you wanted her to come here. You wanna write her, then write her. But you can't force her to come in front of us.
Council President?
You cannot do that. So don't keep lying to the community of what you think you can do and you can't do. He is lying.
Can I, can I? I have the floor. I have the, I have the floor.
Council members, council members, Councilman Kalik has the floor. Right after that, let's definitely close the workshop.
Council President.
I have the floor.
Only, 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 I can say this. I can say that I say them.
Councilman Les, Kalik has already started. Councilman Kalik, continue, please. And then right after that. Listen, let Councilman Kalik finish, please. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I don't even know why are we making a show up in here. It's like a show to me. Della or whoever, we could call Council President. You could call her anytime. You could stop by her office. You could find out what happened. I could go by Della's office. I could give her a call. Hey, Councilwoman, what happened? Councilwoman Mims, anybody could go find out. Why are we making it? I'm speaking, sir. I have utmost respect for you. Mr. Garcia, I have utmost respect for you. I have known you for years. I'm speaking. Please do not disturb me. I have no clue what's going on. I thought that you wasn't with Peruvian Parade before. That's what I'm thinking. Now I see you are in with Peruvian Parade Inc. As far as I know, my knowledge, if I recollect, a couple of years ago, you did a parade. And Peruvian Parade Inc. kicked you out. Then you organized, so I don't even know what's going on, honest with you. I am not updated. The judge or somebody, I heard it from your own mother, they kicked you out of the organizing or something. Now you're coming with Peruvian parading. So it's a mess out there. I don't know what's going on downstairs. So basically, like I said, we don't need to create a show here. Council President, please do your due diligence. You are the council president. You are the leader in these areas. Go talk to Della. Find out what happened, or whoever you need to speak to. And that's all, and let us know. And let's move forward with the.
Now, the Councilman Kalik, not only for me, it's not only me. I want an explanation in writing to the entire governing body.
Which is fine, perfect.
So because I think it's our, listen, it's our job and our responsibility to make sure that administration is not blocking any entity specifically. That's our right. That's the right, and that's the right thing to do. So with that being said, before, before, council members, Madam Clerk, so we resuming at the workshop. So we close the special meeting.
We had to, yeah.
We close the special meeting.
We had to vote.
Yeah, no, no, we, so we resuming at the workshop. So let's roll call to resume and reopen the workshop. And after that, we'll close it. I would do the closing. So roll call to resume into the workshop.
Roll call to reopen the workshop. Councilwoman Cotton?
Reopening the workshop.
No.
No.
No, we didn't.
No, we did not.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davila? You don't wanna close it, okay?
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Kalik, yes?
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mims?
So what are we doing then?
Reopening the workshop.
Reopening the workshop.
Motion to close them.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Councilman Omar? Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Thank you. Council President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Move to close.
Second.
Just wait for a vote to be counted.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Okay, six. Okay, the votes are six in favor. One, I'm sorry, one against, and two absent. The workshop is reopened, yes. Thank you, Councilwoman.
We have a motion to close the workshop, Madam Clerk.
Motion to close.
Moved by Councilmember Les, and seconded by Councilman Evi.
Don't leave, don't leave.
Roll call, roll call to resume, to close the workshop.
Roll call to open the workshop of May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just wanna say, I was just looking through this. I wanna say, give my condolences to the Charlotte Williams family. Her mom was Miss Moore. Miss Moore lived in the Fifth Avenue project for years. She was truly, truly a community person and her daughter Charlotte. And I just wanna send my condolences to you, to the family out there. Also, this past, this weekend coming up, my aunt passed in Queens. She is the last living relative on my father's side. She was ninety years old. So my family now, on my father's side, is no more sisters and brothers. Everybody is gone. And so I will be traveling over there. And I said, and that's why when you hear me talk about family and community and doing things, people are slowly leaving here quickly. And you're gonna have families that are not gonna, there's gonna be totally nobody left. Especially if you don't have grandchildren to carry the name on. So I wanna say to the community, let's just care for each other as much as we can and not be going back and forth, back and forth. What I find is that you may not like the answer, but it is the answer. And sometimes you have to accept the answer. You may not like how it is, but it is the answer. So, but we as a community must do our best to do what we can for each other. But I wanna say to you all out there, thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you, TV land, for watching it. Sometimes, you know, we say different things to each other. Sometimes, you know, we say different things to each other. But I think council members sometimes need to understand what they can do and what they cannot do. And one thing I'm not going to do is tell you a lie, and I know it's a lie. I'm going to tell you the truth, whether you like it or not, but I'm going to tell you what it is. And sometimes people don't want to know what it is, but I'm going to tell you what it is. With that being said, everyone, Corporation Council, my Madam Clerk, my secretary is Diana, all my council members, let's all have a good night. With that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Davila, to close the workshop? Okay, she's out the door. To close the workshop.
Thank you so much. Councilman Kalik?
Good night, everyone. My vote is yes.
Councilwoman Vims? Okay, Councilman Omar?
It is 2:10. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Please make sure your children are rested. They eat well, and they're in school on time. We're in testing in the Patterson Public Schools until the 21st. My vote is yes. Good night, everybody.
Thank you so much. Councilman Omar?
Good night, Patterson.
Yes, Councilman Vales?
My vote is yes.
So Council President, Council President, perception is a lot. When you see a deputy mayor in the side of the other organization, it says a lot. Okay, it says a lot. Perception is really important. When you see a deputy mayor at the mayor's office lobbying for an organization, it says a lot. Says a lot. Perception, perception means a lot. So saying that, I just want to say my deepest condolences. I know my colleague knows about Carlos Garcia passed away. I feel bad with that family because two years ago, the daughter requests me the name of the street, and I gave it to the sixth ward councilman and disappeared. So moving forward, Council President, you go see a resolution of Carlos Garcia.
We do it together.
Yeah, we go do it together. I have the rest. This is what happened. I have the biography of Carlos Garcia two years ago, and I gave it to Aldo Lucez. He says there was a lot of street naming in the midst that we going to do it after. But now he's in the state, so I'm taking ownership with Council President on that. If you want to be co-sponsored, we could do it. So it's only one block that he wants. So saying that, good night. Stay safe. Peace, everyone in the city of Patterson. God bless you all, and let's pray each other. Saying that, the secretary, let's welcome our new secretary at the city council, Council President. Council President, our new secretary.
Oh, yes.